Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order our regular scheduled council meeting for Monday, October 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members that have given their lives while defending our country. Would everybody please stand?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Miller, you take the roll, please.
Mayor Walker.
Here.
Mayor Protem Kerwin.
Show her absent an excuse, please.
Councilmember Squires.
Here.
Councilmember DeMichael.
Here.
Councilmember Earl.
Here.
Councilmember Jacobs.
Here.
Councilmember Lynch.
Here.
You do have a quorum with six members present.
Thank you, sir. Item four, approval of the agenda as presented.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the agenda for Monday, October 25th, 2021, at 7:00 PM.
Support.
Support from Councilmember DeMichael. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 6-0. We have no recognition tonight. I don't see anybody here from the state or county, which I think is unbelievable, but... Moving on to item seven. We put a video together, Mr. York and Christian Gibbons, on how to navigate through the Garden City website. People are always asking, "How do I find the water bill? How do I find agendas?" So, we're going to have a two-minute video showing you how to navigate on GardenCityMI.org. Go ahead.
Garden City's website, GardenCityMI.org, is the home for residents to find information about their community. There's an unlimited source of information on the Garden City website. But today, we'll focus on how to find minutes and agendas for meetings, how to find and pay your water bill, and how to look up ordinances. Finding minutes and agendas on the Garden City website is simple. Just hover your mouse over the government menu near the top of the page and scroll down on the left to agendas and minutes. There you'll find agendas for council meetings, the planning and zoning commissions, along with the Parks and Recreation Commission and the DDA. You'll also find the minutes for meetings that have already occurred and video recordings when available. Paying or viewing your water bill is just as easy. You can scroll down on the online bill pay icon towards the top of the page, or scroll down to the property tax, water bill, and building department information button lower on the page. Those will take you to the BSNA website that hosts the information for the city. Just fill in your address at the top of the screen, hit search, and the website will take you to the address you're looking for. Along with information about property tax, home sales, and building information, you can click on utility bill info at the top of the page to find out how much your water bill is and to pay online. For complete details on other ways to pay your water bill, under the government tab, To find the city charter and ordinances, again, hover over the government tab on the top-left side of the page and scroll down to charter and ordinances. That will take you to the website that hosts the city's charter and ordinances. Either search the ordinances by typing any keyword like animals or parking, or click on the ordinance by chapter on the left side of the screen to take you to the ordinances. The charter can also be found on this website. Other helpful information on the city's website are the most recent additions of the Garden City Buzz, the city's regular newsletter that highlights city information, a calendar that shows city meeting dates and events, and GC Fix-It, where residents can report non-urgent ordinance violations, potholes, or other issues within Garden City. You can always use the search on the city's website to find this and other information at GardenCityMI.org.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. York, for that. I hope that helps the residents to find what they need to find, the information on the city website. We're just trying to make it easier. Again, we don't have a newspaper anymore, so between the Garden City Buzz and the website and council meetings, that's pretty much where you're going to get your information on anything in the city. So, we're trying to always make improvements. Moving on to item eight, community events. I'm going to call up the Parks and Rec Director, Mr. Jason.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I did the...took the liberty of printing off all of our events and everything that I'll be going over tonight, so you guys can see that, so you don't have to write it down. So, I'll be going over what we're going to finish up with October and then November and December events. So, this coming Saturday, we're going to be hosting our annual Halloween skate at the ice arena. That will be from 7 to 8:20 PM. And this will also have our usual costume contest for the best purchased costume and the best homemade costume there as well. The tickets will be $10, and then if you want to rent skates, it'll be an additional $3. In the month of November, we're going to have our annual Learn to Play Soccer for four-to-six-year-olds. That'll be held over at the Maplewood Community Center, and that'll be starting on November 2nd. And it will run through December 21st, and the cost of that will be $45. Soccer Skills, which is immediately after that, this is for the little bit older kids. That'll be for 68-year-olds, and that will again run from November 2nd to December 21st. And that again will also be at Maplewood Community Center. A new event and program that we're going to be doing is called a Mother-Sun Let's Have Some Fun. It's kind of a little bit of a spin-off from a Mother-Sun Dance. So, Lori is putting this together. It's going to be involved with games and playing ping pong and stuff like that over at Maplewood Community Center. And we'll also provide pizza for that day of the event. That will be on Friday, November 5th, at the Maplewood Center, from 6:00 to 7:30. And that will be also for ages 6 to 10. And then registration will only be $8. Next item we have is Nerf Wars. That will be also at the Maplewood Community Center. That'll be on Saturday, November 6th, from 11:00 AM till 12:30 PM. And that'll be for ages 7 to 9, and the registration for that is $15. Kids Dodgeball. We had a great success last year with this program, so we're going to start it again...have it again over at the Maplewood Center. That will start on Monday, November 8th, and run through December 21st, and that will run for eight weeks. And how we do this program is we have the kids register themselves, and then we do a rate night the week prior to, just so then that way we can put the teams together and make it a little bit more even. Instead of families having to put together teams themselves, we go ahead and take care of that for them. So, this will be for ages 7 to 11. And we ask the parents to register the kids by Wednesday, October 27th, which is this coming Wednesday. And rate night will be Monday, November 1st, which is the week prior to, just so we can get everybody on board and in proper teams. And then the final event that we'll have is the Letters to Santa. We'll begin on November 29th. And that is for children of Garden City to be able to write a letter to Santa. So, we've done this in previous years, and we had great success with it. So, we're going to do it again, and that will run from November 29th through December 10th. And we do that short in December, so then that way we can make sure that all the letters get to Santa, and then that way he can write them back to the kids. So, just another great event for us over at Maplewood, or I'm sorry, with the city. In December, we're going to do a brand-new event. It's going to be a breakfast with Santa. This, again, will also be at Maplewood Community Center on Saturday, December 4th, from 9:30 till 11:00 AM. It will be for ages 3 to 12. And the cost will be $12 per person, because we will be providing breakfast for the participants, and that includes the adults as well. And it just gives them an opportunity to have some time with Santa and have breakfast with them, and then also have a photo opportunity with them afterwards. So, we're pretty excited for that event. And then with the next event is the Santa Ride Through the City. That will be on Thursday, December 16th. That's another program that we've offered in previous years as well. That will be at 6:30 PM when we'll start. And Santa will be riding around throughout the city, and the route will be available on the website, so then that way everybody can get the most up-to-date route for that. And then the final event will be our Senior Christmas Party on Friday, December 17th, from 12 until 3:00 PM over at Maplewood. And tickets are $20, and they will start to go on sale on November 1st. And this will consist of live music. The lunch will be catered by Catherine's Catering, and then also we'll have some giveaway baskets in 50/50. So, pretty exciting times.
Sounds good. All right? Thank you, sir.
Mayor?
Yes?
Just want to mention before Brad sits down, his staff, the work they did for the egg haunt. The first one, that was fantastic, and we knew, talking about it, the first one's usually limited expectations, because people aren't quite sure what an egg haunt is. Turned out to be a shocker for me, how many people. We were down about 40 minutes beforehand. It was like Field of Dreams with cars just keep driving into city park from all directions. So, it was outstanding of a crowd that came through. Lori and our dance troupe did a wonderful job with the Thriller dance, you know, first, before everybody went out to look for their eggs. Just overall, staff, you know, Johnny on the spot, great costumes, and overall, planning was great for this first one especially. So, next year, I know they're talking about adding some haunted hayrides, also a part of the event itself, around the park a little bit. So, great things to build on, but that was a wonderful event, especially first time out.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, item nine, we have no petitions or communications, no public hearings. Move on to item 11, the consent agenda.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move for the approval of the consent agenda, item 11A, 1, 2, and 3.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0. Moving on to our action items. Item 1, 2021-22 Winter Season Road Salt Contract. I'm going to ask Mr. Omen, the DPS Director, to come up. He's actually got the next three things on the agenda, so...
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Excuse me. It's this time of year again. This is for our annual salt, road salt purchase. We like to purchase this through the state contract, again, which we have used quite a few years now. In a typical winter season, we use between 1,200 and 1,300 tons of salt. Per this contract, we will be ordering 1,400 tons of salt. We are required to purchase 80% of this order, but we can also purchase up to 20% more if needed. This year's bid price is $43.58. This is a savings of $6.44 per ton from last year's price, and $8.80 savings per ton from two years ago. Our supplier will be the Detroit Salt Company from Detroit, Michigan.
Mayor?
Councilmember DeMichael.
I move to approve the 2021-2022 Winter Season Road Salt Contract for...with Detroit Salt Company of Detroit, Michigan, in compliance with Michigan State bid in the amount not to exceed $76,574. Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Any comments from the table?
Just one, Mayor. I like, we're going down in price per ton, so from two years ago, it's almost $9 a ton, so, good job.
Yeah, not many things are going down in price.
You ain't kidding.
No.
I do have one quick question. Mr. Omen, in reference to the salt that we put down, I know on the newer roads, we cannot put salt. We have to put sand. Is that going to be coming from a separate contract, or do we already have that in place?
We already have that in place, and that's not much of a quantity for the roads that we have to sand, so...
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the table?
Mayor, it just...it looks like just most of the municipalities around us and other counties use the same fender, so that makes me feel better, too.
Any comments from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0. Item 2, 2022 Wayne County Annual Road Permits. Mr. Omen.
Yes, Mayor and Council. I'm asking tonight to adopt the attached resolution for our annual Wayne County right-of-way permits. There is one permit that allows us to work in the county right-of-way for maintenance of our water mains, sewers, both sanitary and storm. There's also a permit for pavement restoration and a permit for special events. There are no fees associated with these permits.
No fees at all. Mayor? Councilmember Earl?
I move to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the execution of Wayne County permits for the 2022 calendar year.
Support. Support from Councilmember Jacobs. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes, 6-0. Item 3, Marquette Avenue Tree Planting. Mr. Omen.
This is the last thing I have for you tonight. This is to approve a contract with Davy Tree for the planting of 20 trees along Marquette Island from Vanoye to Radcliffe.
Mayor?
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve the contract with Davy Tree of Canton, Michigan, to plant 20 trees along the Marquette Avenue medium from Vanoye Road to Radcliffe Road in an amount not to exceed $11,541.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. For the residents, I know some of them are interested. The arborist from Davy Tree recommended swamp white oaks, red point maples, and Princeton elms. That's the three types of trees, and they all come with a one-year warranty. And again, it will be on Marquette, on the medians between Vanoye and Radcliffe. Just trying to give you as much information as we can. Any other comments from the table?
I have a question. Do we have the three different ones that are pretty well three different styles? How do we...is it going to go ABC, ABC, all the way down, or...
Yeah, they'll space them out. Davy Tree did the planning last year for us on Marquette from Inkster Road to Vanoye. They're just going to continue on all the way to Radcliffe with the same type of trees?
Yeah, I just didn't know if they did it, you know, two of this kind and then one, or just...
No, I think they've been staggered. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from the table?
Just a quick question. So, these trees aren't the type that in 20 years will be tearing up the roads or with the roots?
No, Davy Tree has a team of certified arborists, which they highly recommend this type of tree in the right-of-way.
Any questions from the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Omen. Item 4, Sale of Vehicles by the Police Department. The police chief's not here, not here tonight, so Mr. Dockerty?
Thanks, Mayor. This action item, the police department's requesting council's approval to sell four vehicles currently in the city's possession. All four vehicles were acquired through forfeiture after being driven by repeat drunk driver offenders who were arrested by our police department. Michigan law requires the police department to sell these vehicles once forfeited, so with approval tonight, they'll be made ready to sell, sell, and sold via auction. So, four vehicles for tonight for the council to consider getting rid of.
Councilmember Jacobs.
I move to approve the sales of the vehicles listed on the attached sheet currently in the possession of the Garden City Police Department. The sale of each vehicle will be conducted by the chief of police or is designated for fair market value through an auction process.
Support.
Support from Councilmember DeMichael. Any comments from the table? From the general public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, 6-0. We'll move on to item 12, public comments that were not on the agenda tonight. If you wish to speak, please come up the podium, state your name. There is a three-minute time limit. Again, this is the opportunity to make a comment or statement. It's not the time to go back and forth with council members. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, just wanted to come before the council this evening and advise that I'm Toni Dunbar. I am the legislative liaison and caseworker for Congresswoman Rashida Tlaib. Just wanted to show my face and say that I'll be coming to your meetings from here on out. We have a designated set time from our office to come, which is six times a year. And so, of course, this is my start. I'm just starting with her office. We did want to let our constituents know that if they have not already applied for the FEMA assistance for the June 25th and 26th flooding, that the extended time has been to November 12th. Also, our office is working to be able to get the public assistance, because as of right now, FEMA is only providing it to residents. So, if any public properties have been damaged, right now, they can't get any money to be able, or cities cannot get money to be able to assist with that. So, we are working hard to be able to work with FEMA. As of last Thursday, having a one-on-one conversation to ask and inquire about that. Also, our office has what we call the Military Service Academy nominations for all of our high school students that might be interested into... I got you. We definitely got you guys. Okay, but just to let them know, our deadline is November 5th for all of our...anybody that's eligible in high school to be able to. I'm the person that's over it, and I'm here again. My name's Toni Dunbar. Just wanted to let you know, all know that we are here. I watch online, because I have a new daughter. She's one this year, but...and so, I've just been keeping in, keeping track as much as I can and reaching out to the city manager if we have any constituent concerns.
Thank you. Anybody else under public comments? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Denise Stably, and I am a member of the Garden City Goodfellas Organization. And we are having a bowling fundraiser on November 6th at Oak Lanes in Westland. Prices $25 per person. That includes two games of bowling, pizza, and soft drinks. And we are encouraging as many people to attend as possible, because Goodfellows, you know, helps children here locally in Garden City. And we know that things are tough for a lot of families right now, and we want to do as much as we can to help, you know, our own residents. So, I don't know if we can post this flyer, like, on the city's Facebook page or something, just to be able to get a wider, you know, distribution for that.
We'll check it out.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, their motto is "No Kid Without a Christmas." So, thank you for bringing that up. Anybody else under public comments? Okay, city managers' report.
All right, Mayor, just want to recognize Public Works. This past week, we had the Public Works Area of Garden City University class. The tremendous job they did in cleaning up the yard is...was great. The vehicles themselves laid out like an expo center. We're going to have another Garden City University new class starting after the New Year, but I think it was really worthwhile, once you go to some of these classes and see what really our departments do. And Public Works, I think, did a tremendous job in not only presenting the yard and their vehicles, but also information sharing with everybody. I think the...after a while, once people get to really see what we do, they'll realize behind the scenes, it's not an easy gig, and...but they're very proud of themselves out in Public Works, and I think we should be proud of them, too, for what they've done. Now, they just have to get ready for the snow season. Looks like it started today. That's all I have tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Earl?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have is thank you to the police department. There was a serious situation on Friday. They acted swiftly. It was not from our city. It was from another city, just kind of spilled over into our city. They did a great job. They locked it down, worked really hard on it, and I'm sure the general public appreciates the professionalism and the hard work that they do to protect us, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Squires?
Yes, I have a couple of things here. First of all, I want to give a shout-out to the Garden City Police Department and Fire Department. I had to call 911 on Tuesday morning at 7:00 AM. The electric line from the street light in front of my house evidently had snapped, and I noticed smoke and stuff by the garage next door. And they responded quickly. They got DTE out there, and everything was good. So, thank you for that. Also, Mr. Jason, great planning for the city. There's kids that need so much, that need stuff to do, and you're taking care of it. Also, don't forget the 60th Annual Downtown Garden City Sandaline Parade that will be on November 27th, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving. And if you want to be in the parade, just go to www.sandalineparade.com, and you can fill out the application for that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Jacobs?
A couple of things, Mayor. I know at the last council meeting, which was about two weeks ago, I mentioned about, I know there's a date for construction that is supposed to be significantly complete, which is, I found out, September 17th. We're at almost the end of October, and in the two weeks that I mentioned this, Pierce Street, Hennepin, especially James, I went down there today, they are nowhere near what I would call substantially complete. Either we have to really get on our engineers that write up these contracts and start finding these companies, but they should be right now getting ready to lay sod on all of them, and those three are nowhere, nowhere close to it. Farmington's close, and they do have some sod down, so that one's...to me, that one's on pace. The other ones are not. I don't...I don't know what we have to do to get them to be...they should be wrapping it up now, not...not still having to put another layer down on James Street of asphalt. Topsoil is nowhere down on any of those other three streets. To me, it's unacceptable. So, hopefully, we can look into that. On better news, the Kiwanis had their pig race on Saturday. It was kind of a last minute. They didn't get a lot of advertising out there, but for the people that did show up, I believe they had a lot of fun. Pigs were eating well, and it was a good time, and they did raise some money. And again, that goes for the kids. They help out at Christmas time, especially with the kids, and so it went to a good cause. And also, coming up this Thursday, the Garden City Business Alliance. This Thursday, 5:30 to 7:00 at the Radcliffe Center, they are having their trunk-or-treat. This year, you have to purchase your ticket online. It's a dollar. And you can go to their website to either have a QR code that you can scan, and it'll take you to it, or you can go to the GCBA website, which I found a little easier, and you just purchase your ticket, and you have to have it purchased before you go there. They're limiting it to 2,000 kids, so it should be a good time. Hopefully, the weather's a little better than tonight. But other than that, that's it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynch?
Well, the other things were covered, so I just want to make a comment with the Parks and Rec. If you heard the list of items that Mr. Jason was mentioning coming up in Parks and Rec, you don't have to memorize it from watching our program. You can look at the Garden City playbook that Parks and Rec's put out and mailed to each home, and it has a list of everything that they're doing. So, make sure you refer back to that, especially if you have children in Garden City. Ah, there's a lot... a lot of good things going on in Parks and Rec Department and over at Maplewood. And that's all that I have.
Thank you. Councilmember DeMichael?
Everything was pretty much covered tonight, Mayor. I just want to tell everybody to have a safe and happy Halloween. That's all I got.
Mr. Miller?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I just wanted to give you a recap of our shred day. That was this past Saturday. We served 222 residents there, and we did, collected more than 300 pounds of food for the home pantry. It included a lot of personal hygiene products also, we had asked for that, and the people really did, they listened, and they gave us a lot of good donations for personal hygiene products. We collected $105 in donations for the food pantry. I want to thank the staff and the volunteers. Special shout-out to Jade Hunter and Savannah Demmers. They were out directing traffic. There are kids from the Garden City High School, they came out, volunteered, and that was the hardest job really, directing people where to go, getting in the right line. I also want to thank Margot Arnosky for spearheading this and taking the leadership. We were out there, no rain, and we got everyone served through by 1:00, and I think it was a good event, so, thank you.
Thank you. I got several items tonight. First, Skeleton Nights at the Straight Farmhouse. This is this Friday and Saturday night. Tickets are $3.50 apiece, and you have to go online to get them at straightfarmhouse.org for this event. That's Skeleton Nights at the Straight Farmhouse on Merriman Road. I was asked to mention that. I, too, want to say the great pig race for the Kiwanis that put on this last weekend was a great event. I also want to give kudos to Mr. Chason on the egg haunt. That was an excellent turnout, and those kids in the Dance Express that danced the Thriller on that cold asphalt, it was cold out there, they did an excellent job, and for the first event ever, and it was well-received, there was a lot of people out there, it was pretty cool. The Golden Book has a lot of good information for Garden City residents and businesses. It has been mailed out to all residents and businesses. If by some chance, the United States Post Office did not bring you one, we have several up here at City Hall, just come up to City Hall and get one in the lobby. We have plenty of copies. You should have a copy of this in every house. Lot of vital information in here, every phone number to every department's in here. Very good book. I want to thank Mr. Doherty and all the department heads that updated this and went through it for each department, and, like I said, it's real good information, so please don't throw it away. Keep it in your drawer, it's going to be handy for you. And then, Garden City University, last week's class was at DPW. Good job, Mr. Omen. That was well-received, very good tour of the equipment. It was a good class, and people I talked to really, really thought it was done professionally, they really liked it. So, another good thing here at Garden City. And then Veterans Day, November 11th, at 11:00 a.m. We always have it at the O'Leary Auditorium. The O'Leary is under construction, so we're still having Veterans Day, but it's going to be at the Garden City Middle School, the old Garden City West, on November 11th at 11:00 a.m. Please come out and support your veterans. We try to put on a good ceremony every year, but again, it's at the Garden City Middle School this year on November 11th, and because it's inside the school, you do have to wear a mask. So, please come out for Veterans Day, November 11th, at the Garden City Middle School. That's all I have tonight, no further business. This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.[1756.63][1756.63][music]